All right, Eddie here. The Hamilton County Commissioner's meeting is now in session. The Honorable Sergeant shifting presiding. Please remain standing. At this time, I'd like to call for order the June 23, 2022 meeting of the Hamilton County Legislative Board, and I'm going to ask Commissioner Robbie Hahn to lead us in our prayer.
Let's pray. Dear Father, Lord, we give all thanks and praise to you for allowing us to come together to discuss community topics and problems, Lord. We ask you, God, to give us civil discourse today that will all get a level head and do what we truly believe is right for this community and this people area. Father God, we ask that you be with those people who aren't able to be with us today, Joe, who's still in the nursing home, who got worse days, he'll be coming home, I think, Monday, still recovering, who couldn't raise from the infection, and still have long process to get them, you know, who can get back good. Father God, our thoughts, God, our speech, God, our actions, Lord. In thy name I pray.
Thank you, Commissioner Hahn. This time, I'm going to ask Commissioner Gohn to lead us in our prayer, please.
Attention, salute, praise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, United States of America. Your call is dismissed. Okay? Let me turn on. Thank you. Thank you, Commissioner. If it's okay with the commission, I think we'll proceed at this time with our recognitions. And I'm going to ask Mayor Britton to please come to the well.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Eddie, if you and your panel on the front row would start with you. We have an honor this afternoon of recognizing a couple of individuals who devoted a large part of their lives to service of people of Hamilton County in more than one way. But for us, it's for their service to Hamilton County Government. And this is Eddie Davis, retiring county coroner, the last county coroner in Tennessee. And as the state transitions to the death investigator model and a lot of consolidation in the county operation, we held a reception for Eddie and Sam Moore this afternoon so their friends could honor them. One thing that we, as the county government, want to do in special recognition for Eddie because he is the last county coroner in the state of Tennessee and the history of Hamilton County is recognize him by declaring him county coroner emeritus. So he will have the designation of county coroner for the rest of his life. And so Eddie, Hamilton County Government, in recognition of 31 years of meritorious service as county coroner, Eddie R. Davis served as a county coroner emeritus, that is Eddie, 21th day team.
Great. (applause). I greatly thank you, and I'm going to appreciate the great standing, the mayor, and the office. It's been a great one. And 31 years and over 50,000 deaths. And we're doing all over again because it was a chance to help people that were working. Hopefully, I may find just a little thing to do, and I did, and it was well worth my time. Of course, my wife was very happy that the phone was on three. Three, four times a night usually. I want to give all of you a souvenir. As the mayor said, I'm the last coroner in Tennessee. Nashville called and told us that.
You gave me one.
I gave you one, okay.
Thank you.
This is the Hamilton County Coroner's card, and I'm the last one, so.
You got one. Thank you, sir.
And if you want to have some fun with it, hang it on your refrigerator. And when somebody says, "What's that?", you say, "Well, the odor of following you has done a little bad, and we just want to be prepared." But I mean, you've got to have a good time, no matter what your name is.
Thank you.
I may have to rush to town for him.
Thank you, Mike.
Thank you all. Thank my family.
That's what I'm having feeling. It's all fine.
I'm kind of tired, so.
Sam, you in here, your panelists. And one of the things that he's helped Hamilton County Government is his service for 36 years as a foreman of the grand jury. And we served under two criminal judges.
Yes.
And Judge Beckner and Judge Beckner, right? And so Sam's just a wonderful man and a wonderful family. And what we want to recognize Sam for his 36 years, and Sam, we are naming you Grand Jury Foreman Emeritus. And so in recognition of your 36 years of meritorious service as a grand jury foreman, we designate you as Grand Jury Foreman Emeritus.
Appreciate it. (applause). I just want to say, I used to work for the Department of Public Welfare, which was in the Department of Human Services. I worked there from 1970 until 1984. And then after I was retired, or didn't retire, after I left there, because we had Sam Ziegler off of it. And so Judge Beckner asked me to serve as foreman emeritus. Well, at that time, Bob Reel, a longtime manager of Parkville, was former vanguard. And Mr. Reel, that was his design, and he was ill and couldn't fail. So Eddie said, "I'm going to go ahead and appoint you." I said, "No, just wait. You know, I'm not doing it for any fame or glory or whatever. Just let him serve." And so he served until he died, and then Eddie officially appointed. Well, before Mr. Reel, Dorothy Cox, we all know her, she was former vanguard. Poor woman, or poor person, or whatever, but she was former vanguard. And so Eddie, a good friend of mine, and a good friend of my wife Sharon, this, and our son Matthew, our other son, who lives in Harrisonville, up in Nashville, and so couldn't be here. So we've got two sons. For a long time, we had three grandsons, and then we've got two granddaughters now. And they have my heart. Like, we didn't know about little girls. But anyway, Eddie had been friends with Sharon. Sharon used to be, worked for the juvenile probation office, and she worked right upstairs here in the ad, at the courthouse, and I worked down in the basement. And a frequent mutual friend is Judy Pack, here in Houston. And of course, they presented us over those centers where I went to school. They presented us with the model of the courthouse, you know. And so I told them that that had a special meaning because that's where we met, the fact that we... Well, we looked at that courthouse down and thought about when I first gave to Sharon that. Most of you all know me. I love Marston, I love Hamilton County. And when I got through school, I went to Carson U. And so I was, at the ready for the draft, because that was here in that Vietnam. I read for the draft, and I was a two S, which meant I was a student. And then it got worse over there in Vietnam, so I was 1A, seven. And they called me to the office, and I went in there for reexamineing. And as a result, they turned me down because I was rotting in my feet. And so a year later, I was, and my feet's good. But I got sent back down there about four weeks later, got a car to mail, and Sam's daughter was there, and she was there, and the person. He said, "What are you doing back here?" I said, "Well, I got a car to go." He said, "We don't want you." So as a result, I'd gone from one A to one Y, and too many of y'all know what was going on. And so he looked before it, I guess, failed. But it was my desire to do and to serve. My father was disabled, but he died, he was 58 years old, and very old, too. And he died when he was 58 years old, and I was clean. So I wanted to give service to the community, which I've served on campus boards and active insurance. And then Eddie Beckner asked me to reappoint the vanguard, and I agreed. And if he retired, Eddie Pack, thanks for my service, and then Judge Dobbs, I said I refused him. We're blessed in Hamilton County to have good lecturers and officials, and just a policeman and farmer, just across the board. So he, because Eddie Pack makes my service, and John Dobbs wanted to know if I would serve one term. The judge appointed former vanguard for two years at the time. And I couldn't refuse Judge Dobbs, so he asked me, and I agreed to it. And then I was, he definitely asked me again, but I've served in about 13 years. But anyway, it's been my honor to be served. And that's one way I've given back. I didn't, had to wear a uniform and five over seasons. But I've fought for many causes here in Hamilton County. And if you all know me, I've always tried to do the right things for the right reason. And Eddie Beckner told me that the vanguard is to always be fair first, and then secondly, better to appear to be fair. You know, and sometimes that's important, that's being fair, to do things for people. That's all. Because I've talked a long time, I thank you all, and I know many of you all, and that's just been an honor.
(applause).
And I'm glad to start sharing the stage, but my good friend Eddie Davis, 1960, about five.
Somewhere around about three.
You've had a long afternoon, so you're welcome to stay with us, but you also can leave if you want to, so.
Thank you.
Okay. Just instead of reading the whole thing, just mention.
Goodness, very much.
Okay, we can do our roll call now, so please do your roll call.
Thirteen present, one absent.
Okay, we are open for business, and you have on your agenda item number two. The Marston-Hamilton Library Board of Trustees have nominated three people to serve on their board, Phyllis Erisman, Roxanna Bowen, Rob Reel. We need to do this off the board, so the chair would entertain a motion to approve those nominees.
So moved, Chairman.
Okay, Mr. Gohn has moved. Do we have a second?
Second.
Mr. DeBoer has seconded the motion. All of those in favor of the motion, let it be known by saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, the motion is approved. At this time, the chair will recognize Chairman Jim Stapp of the Calendar and Rules Committee.
Good evening, Chairman. Item 3A, approval of consent calendar items, I put that in form of motion.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 3A, thirteen yeas, zero nae.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Item 3B, approval of regular calendar items, I put that in form of motion.
We have a motion? Do we have a second? It may be on the screen, and I can't see it. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 3B, thirteen yeas, zero nae.
All right, the motion is approved.
All I have, Chairman.
Thank you very much. At this time, the chair would entertain a motion on the board to approve the consent calendar.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Doty has moved. Do we have a second?
I'll second.
We have a motion and a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 4A, thirteen yeas, zero nae.
The motion is approved. At this time, we would entertain comments from the public regarding consent, or agenda items only. We do have two requests to speak for five minutes. At this time, the chair would recognize Edna Green.
Thank you, Chairman.
Edna Green, 4981 Cameron Road. I'd like to address the one regarding the county checks, the attorneys, to be specific. First of all, county is first time since 2015 of paying Mr. Capps correctly as a government official. They're paying him on his $1,200 salary per year. They're doing it monthly, so congratulations. What I would like to know is, first thing, is he still billing to attend the meetings as well as the 1,200? Is he still billing you per hour? Nor one of you have asked, as far as I know, because it's never been brought in? So I would like to ask you, and if you don't want to answer me, I'd love to ask Mr. Capps if he's here. Surely, he can answer for himself. Well, I don't see you. There he is. Are you still billing, sir, for both of them?
Topic of pending litigation, as you well know, Mr. Green.
Point of order, it's not an A B conversation, it's public comment.
I have a second question. As most of you know, I filed a lawsuit in 18 to make Mr. Capps pay back what he had double-billed the citizens of Hamilton County. Not being smart, folks, I pay for my groceries one time, I pay for my gas one time. I don't pay twice. And I can see some of you blowing, but if you paid twice for your groceries, you've got more money than the rest of us citizens.
Point of order, Chairman, is that on the agenda?
That is, that checks are on the agenda, sir. You should not interrupt me, sir. You should have more respect.
I interrupted you, ma'am.
Yes, you did interrupt me, sir.
Yes, I did. Point of order.
But anyway, would you please tell him to let me finish my five minutes, please?
You can finish your five minutes, but this particular item, as the attorney has pointed out to you, is being litigated, and we cannot respond in any way.
Okay, well, you may not be respond, but I may be able to speak. Second thing on the agenda. He has been paid all the way through for this. That's Hamilton County money you're spending. It's not yours, it's not Mr. Britton's, it's Hamilton County citizens' money. You need to be asking questions about it. You need to ask, where's it going? What's it going for? You need to check his billing, and personally, I don't think nor one of you checked it. Second thing on the agenda is the billing for Burwell for $95,000. I'd like to thank Mr. DeBoer for asking the question the other day. I see no value being saved. And unfortunately, I'm a working citizen that has to have value for her dollar, and I'm assuming that the rest of the folks in this gallery feel the same way because of the comments I've read. You folks need to speak up and ask questions. That's what you are put in here for. I know some of you don't want to hear it, but thank God for freedom of speech. I know that you have tried to squash it in the past, but it is my constitutional right to tell you folks you need to be questioning. You don't need to just be doling out taxpayer money. $95,000 would do quite a bit of a rote. And I don't know about the rest of you, my road's pitiful. And I'm sure it's in better shape than Mr. Nice's, but it's still pitiful. You need to have more concern and be a good steward. Some of you are leaving us, so you need to be a good steward. You just need to take care of things and step up and act like men and little woman and do the right thing, as in the prayer that was asked tonight. Please, for a change, step up and do the right thing. It is more than needed. Thank you.
Thank you for your comments. We also have a request from Lyndon Noe for five minutes. Lyndon Noe, you're recognized.
Thank you, Lyndon Noe, Joe Stevens Road. It appears the sound is working this time. I watched the committee meeting from the 13th, and I couldn't hear Mr. Pettit or just about anybody who was speaking from this particular podium with this microphone. You'll recall, you paid $50,000 for this setup. You need to make sure it works or is turned on every time. I'd ask to speak about various items on your agenda. I'm going to start with 6C, I, or one. Change orders three and four for the Justice Center. You have change order three, adding another $18,000 to the Justice Center jail, and number four, adding over $6,000 to the jail, Justice Center. Your prior change orders have totaled $117,000. And now, if we go to number two, you have the project manager requesting an additional $95,000 for project management services. Like Ms. Green, I appreciate some of the comments that Mr. DeBoer made last time. He recognized and mentioned that the purpose of hiring a project manager was to save money, to have somebody working with the architect on design. And as Mr. DeBoer pointed out, it doesn't seem like we have saved anything. As your change orders show, we haven't really saved anything. Maybe we reduced by $20,000 and added $100. That's not an overall savings. What is the value of continuing with something that is not working? And that is what Mr. DeBoer said. Mr. Cutshaw, of course, commented a number of times about how it gave him heartburn. I'm paraphrasing there, how he struggled with this particular item. With all these changes to date, actual project costs are over $103 million. Now, that's just cost, that's not interest. As each of you know, with a mortgage or construction, you pay interest. And the estimate, and this is just an estimate based on some documents that have been in your packets, of interest on 90 or 92 million is about $60 million. So at the end of all this, we're going to end up with a four-story jail with some courtrooms with an investment or a payment by taxpayers of over $163 million. That's absolutely outrageous. And to be darned, we'll have that massive four-story jail that the sheriff has told you repeatedly we cannot staff. I think you'll find that the jail currently with 250, 260, however many are in it right now, is understaffed significantly. And yet, we think we can put people on every floor and pay them. Sure, maybe we can with a huge tax increase. I ask that you reject the $95,000 increase to the project manager. I know he has a hard job, he came in late on this, that's part of the problem. If you're going to have a project manager helping you... If you're going to have a project manager helping you with value engineering, they have to be in there when the design is being done, not come in afterwards and start trying to clean up what the architect has designed. So did we get value for it? We got work. Yes, I'm sure hours were spent on it. Did we get value? No. So please consider, don't just consider, do it. You know we don't need to be paying more at this time. Or at least table it and look at it more closely. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission regarding agenda items? You have three minutes.
Bonnie Ballington, 317 Stubblefield Street. I pretty much want to reiterate what Ms. Green and Ms. Noe have said. Every month, there's another expense. This insane Taj Mahal that you people have shoved down the throats of the Hamlin County citizens, that's going to bankrupt the county, every month is coming back with more and more and more money. When's it going to stop? How can we pay for it? How can we expect to buy groceries, send kids to school, put gas in our vehicles or anything else when we're paying for this crazy, insane mistake that you all chose over the taxpayers? This is insanity. $95,000 more thousand for a project manager just a few months into this project? What's it going to be six months down the road or a year? This is a two-year project. How many millions of dollars is going to be added on to what's already been added on before this project's finished? Will it ever be finished? If this keeps up, it won't be. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to speak concerning agenda items only? Seeing none, then we'll proceed with our business, and at this time, we'll recognize Chairman Randy DeBoer of the Finance Committee.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item 6A, approval of the monthly checks, I put that in the form of a motion.
Second.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6A, 13 ye, 09.
The motion is approved.
Item 6B, the request to purchase property for the landfill, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Neesmith, you are recognized.
Randy, how much that going to cost us?
$350,000.
Say it again.
$350,000. We're paying half, the city's paying the other half.
Okay, what was it?
350 total, with 50% coming from county and 50% from state.
How many acres?
Was it 16 acres? I believe it was 16.
It is. 16 acres of undeveloped property, and then the Class III landfill that GFL operates now is 60 cent acres.
Is that over where the McGuffins, where they're parking their trucks right in there? Or is it over behind there?
I don't know. It's adjacent to our current landfill.
Going south?
North.
East. North. East, okay.
Any other discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6B, 13 ye, 09.
The motion is approved.
Item 6C-1 for change order number 3 and 4, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6C-1, 9 ye, 49.
Okay, the motion is approved.
Item 6C-2, this is a change order for request, and that is 95,000. I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6C-2, 8 ye, 59.
The motion is approved.
Item 6C-3, laundry equipment for 70,000, 834, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please. Commissioner Cutshaw.
Item 6C-3, 11 ye, 29.
All right, the motion is approved.
Item 6D, body scanner purchase for the, this is through the opioid settlement funds, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6D, 12 ye, 19.
The motion is approved.
Item 6E, Resolution 2212, a resolution authorizing Hamlin County to increase the threshold required to seal bid, competitive bids and proposals, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6E, 13 ye, 09.
The motion is approved.
Item 6F, bid tabulation for new, non-refurbished personal computers, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6F, 12 ye, 19.
The motion is approved.
Item 6G, banking contract for home trust, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6G, 13 ye, 09.
The motion is approved.
Item 6H-1, Hamlin County Board of Education, Budget Amendment Number 7, and this is for code changes, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Commissioner Neesmith, you are recognized.
What is code changing, Randy?
I have your name.
Yes, please.
I can't hear you.
I'm sorry. It's no increase or decrease in revenue, it's just changing funds between line items. Anytime we move funds from non-personnel to personnel or vice versa, we have to request permission from the commission.
You just go from one to the other.
Yes, sir. And it's all state grant.
Move from one account to the other account. We know how that works. Thank you.
Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6H-1, 13 ye, 09.
The motion is approved.
Item 6H-2, Fund 101, Capital Projects 325, and this is for a parking lot, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? Hearing none, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6H-2, 12 ye, 19.
The motion is approved.
Item 6H-3, Fund 101, Drug Court, this is for housing, rent, supplies, and training, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote a motion.
Item 6H-3, 13 ye, 09.
The motion is approved.
Item 6H-4, Fund 101, Sheriff's Department for 13,000, that's a moving of insurance, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Is there any discussion? If not, let's vote the motion, please.
Item 6H-4, 13 ye, 09.
The motion is approved.
Item 6H-5, Fund 101, EMA for $681.88, and this is for insurance refunds for damage to a truck, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? Commissioner Neesmith.
What was that figure? I got 861.88. Is that right?
Yes, that's what I have, yes.
Okay, I didn't hear you again. Thank you.
All right, anyone else? If not, then let's vote a motion.
Item 6H-5, 13 ye, 09.
The motion is approved.
Item 6H-6, Fund 101 for Parks and Fairboards, 6,500, this is for ongoing Cherokee Park expenses, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote a motion, please. Commissioner Aker, Commissioner Stepp. Oh, I'm sorry.
He tore it up. I tore it up. Yeah.
You had it torn out.
Probably. Being stubborn, I'm afraid. I know.
He looks in his school.
Thank you, ma'am. She's the rescue. I try.
Item 6H-6, 13 ye, 09.
The motion is approved.
Item 6H-7, Fund 101 for Maintenance, Sheriff's Department, this is mostly gasoline, is 30,350, and I put it in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6H-7, 13 ye, 09.
The motion is approved.
Item 6H-8, Fund 116, Garbage and Sanitation, 4,200, and that's for diesel fuel, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6H-8, 13 ye, 09.
The motion is approved.
Item 6H-9, Fund 131, Highway Department, 9,200, that's again for diesel fuel, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote a motion.
Item 6H-9, 13 ye, 09.
The motion is approved.
Item 6H-10, Fund 101, Geographic Information Systems, and that's unused leave, and that's for 1,085, and I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 6H-10, 13 ye, 09.
The motion is approved.
That's all I have, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Chairman DeBoer. This time, the chair will recognize Chairman Tim Goins of the Public Service Committee.
Thank you, Chairman. Item 7A, surplus items of Cherokee Park, I put that in the form of a motion.
We have a motion. We have a second. Any discussion? If not, let's vote a motion, please.
Item 7A, 13 ye, 09.
The motion is approved.
Chairman, that's all I have. Thank you.
Thank you very much, Chairman Goins. At this time, we will entertain non-agenda comments from the public. We do have two requests for five minutes. Edna Green, you're recognized.
Might be.
Edna Green, 4981 Cameron Road, Marstown. What you're getting ready to get is to alert you that praise God, justice was served on Monday, and the verdict came back for criminal court that Mr. Coffey, one of our deputies that has served 21 years with the Sheriff's Department, was declared not guilty of anything. That's what you've got. So I had hit Randy up to question before the thing. I just wanted you to, I don't know what he got, but praise God, justice was served. Now, second thing, you folks voted to sue us for our little placards. Please take the time to clean up your mess before you leave office. Some of you will stay with us, some of you will leave. For the ones of you that have stood by and done the right thing, thank you for your service. You will be dearly missed. For the ones of you that have not, shame on you, as Bobby prayed, please stand up and do what's right and be a good steward to the community and to the Lord. If you fail to do that, you pay for it, I don't. But you folks voted to sue us, you said you were going to sue. I would like very much, instead of leaving it hanging over some of us old folks' head, you put it up, shove it through, get it done. You've got a county attorney, do what you voted on. And if you're not man and women enough to take care of it, rescind it and clean up your mess. Do not leave it for the ones of us that are coming in new, that are going to ask questions, that are going to try to serve the citizens of Hamlin County. We're not going to try to govern the citizens of Hamlin County. We're going to try to serve them and do what's right. We're going to question the expenses, like the 95,000 that you folks voted on so easily tonight. Ask about the change orders. Ask about the ENO insurance that Mr. Burwell talked to you folks about. I'm sure most of you are business people, and you do know what that is. So I'm just wondering why you didn't consult your attorney back here? He's sitting here this time, but not one of you bothered to ask him the question. He is paid with Hamlin County funds, you should be asking him. I know that neither one of you have a law degree, and I respect that, that you didn't want to take a stab at it, but you have a degreed attorney. You should have asked the questions. And it is not too much for us as citizens of Hamlin County to ask you to do your job correctly and professionally and be a good steward. Now, some of you look at me like you think I'm crazy, that's fine, you're entitled to your opinion, as I am mine. But you tried your best to violate my freedom of speech, and I'd just like to see you clean up your messes. Thank you.
Ms. Noe has requested five minutes. Ms. Noe, you're recognized.
Lyndon Noe, Jo Stevens Road, I asked to speak about lawsuits, much as Ms. Green brought up. This all started back in around October 2020, when Mr. Shipley said you cannot wear a shirt like this into this meeting room. A shirt that said no on a $75 million jail Justice Center. How ironic, because his remarks were that this slandered the body. No, it slandered the people. This was free speech. And yet, Mr. Shipley said no. That then led into nine, about 11 months later, in September of 2021, Mr. Shipley and others led you to vote to sue citizens for this bit of free speech. Those are part of the reasons we are now in a lawsuit against you. Because it comes to the point where if you're going to sit here and vote for lawsuits, and that doesn't even include Mr. Goins' request for a declaratory judgment to authorize a deputy or a constable or anybody to remove people from this body if they offend you or if you decide this is a placard, and yet you've never brought a lawsuit. You vote... You vote and you vote, except for Mr. Shipley. He did the unauthorized lawsuit because of a little old camera. But that is why there is a lawsuit against you. At some point, people have to stand up and say, "No. Enough is enough, and we will stand up for our First Amendment rights." So yes, you've been sued. And you, well, I don't know if you even know it, because you, I don't know that your attorney tells you these things. The other item I would like to get into is the rules. As you know, back when Mr. Shipley did his lawsuit, you had an executive meeting and you discussed the lawsuit. And I am quite confident there is an affidavit on file by one commissioner stating that you, that he discussed, your attorney, Chris Capps, discussed the lawsuit against him, the one he says he can't talk about today. He talked about it with you in an executive session. So then you have your rules committee. And the rules review started again as, because of the violation of constitutional rights in the camera lawsuit. What Charles Curtis told you is that you need to know your rules and put them in, he called it a booklet, so all commissioners know the framework of how you operate. There's more to it than just that. You need a Hamlin County code, like I'm sure Mr. Stepp knows the city of Morristown has, where you break it down into divisions like the Tennessee code. And you've got your zoning here, and you've got county commission there, and you've got finance department and other, break, other segments. And then when you want to know something, like Commissioner Pay, which came up, you can go to the code and find out what is the pay and when was it last established. Here's some other suggestions for rules. But the biggest thing is get the rules codified. Quit sitting here, kind of like these lawsuits that just go out in limbo, and the questions that you all ask, and you don't know and you don't find out. Get your rules codified. Individual commissioners should be able to put items on the agenda without getting approval from a committee or from the chairman or however. If you look at other commissions, you'll typically find on their agendas, here's an item sponsored by so-and-so. They don't have to get permission. You need to get decent microphones. Again, you need the Hamlin County Code bad, and you need to keep the 10-day rule and look at contracts before you vote. And don't waive it willy-nilly. Thank you.
Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission on non-agenda items? If so, you have three minutes.
Hi, I'm Ryan Deperson, Sam Adams Road. So I've been attending some county commission meetings since about February. I would say this is the second or third one that I've heard these things come up about suing the citizens of Hamlin County. It's really disturbing that the citizens of Hamlin County could be penalized for coming here and standing at this podium or for wearing a shirt. So I would just like to implore you as well to rescind this or move forward with it. Thank you.
Thank you. Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Lynn Holden, 8150 West Point Drive. I want to thank the county commissioners that responded to my email. I appreciate it. It makes me feel like that I am somebody and that you all are concerned about what I'm concerned about. I appreciate it. And the ones that didn't, God help you. Because see, you were supposed to represent all of Hamlin County, not just your district.
Do we have anyone else who wishes to address the commission?
Barney Ballington, 317 Stubblefield Street. I agree. I don't like the thought of you suing me held over my head as some kind of a weapon. Maybe you all think it is a weapon, but I assure you, it's not. I encourage each and every one of you, sue me. I would enjoy it. It would make my day. But I think every one of you sitting there today know that you don't have a leg to stand on. So why not put a stop to it? What is the point in this senseless childish action? I just, I don't understand how you grown, grownups can sit up here and do the childish things that you do. When one of us says something you don't like, we get called point of order. And let me go on to the rules. Y'all talk about the rules. You throw the rules at us, throw the rules at us. But what happened to the rules committee that you all set up that were going to draw up rules so everybody knew what the rules were? And how come the rules are for us and not you all? You want rules against us that we have to act the way you want us to act, but no rules for you to treat us like human beings. You need to get your act together, grow up and do the right thing. And as a final note, another thing I'm hearing is about this wheel tax sticker for us. What more taxes do you think the citizens of Hamlin County can handle? This crazy Taj Mahal is going sky high every day. We're going to have more and more taxes as time goes on to just put the interest on that bill. And now you want to raise the wheel tax to fix the roads? We know that's not going to happen. You raise the wheel tax, it goes in the general fund, and then it can be allocated out anywhere it wants to, and not one penny will be seen fixing the roads. Get a grip, folks. Do the right thing for a change. Thank you.
Anyone else who wishes to address the commission? Seeing none, commissioners, I want to call your attention to the announcements. The first two are not covered because they relate to July's meetings. But please take note of Item C of our special call meeting Monday, June 27, at 5:00 p.m. in the courthouse here to approve the budget. We stand adjourned.